Here. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Chris Jarom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, there's particular emphasis today on the pledge for all of us here in being the anniversary 17th of 9/11. I'm sure a lot of you can remember exactly where you were and what you were doing, who you were with. And the sky this morning, as the sun came up, was a lot like the sky was that day, the deep blue, crisp light coming from the east. And as we've gotten 17 years from them, I think some of us maybe tend to forget, we're still at war. The cause of freedom and defense of our citizens still continues, and there are people who are putting their lives on the line every day for us in faraway places, doing things that involve incredible sacrifices and risk. And those at home, who are first responders, particularly those who have survived that day, have learned about the effects from the day in terms of inhaling asbestos and other things that had happened, that the death toll continues to rise from 2996 or so on 9/11 to greater numbers today. So I ask that we remember not just those who perished in Pennsylvania and Washington, DC and New York City that day, but those who continue to perish for the cause of defending our country since then, for their family members, their loved ones, and for their brothers and sister first responders, including those who are right here in Omaha.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you all for being here today, and as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve setting a 2019 property tax request as specified on the agenda.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item six, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Harrison 210 with a waiver of Section 53-84D Lot Frontage located northwest of Spence Drive and Harrison Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Mark Johnson, 1144 West Center Road, appearing today on behalf of the applicant Celebrity Holmes, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item seven, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Item eight, an application to consider a Class A liquor license for JGIL Omaha LLC doing business as Jay Gilbert's Wood Fired Steaks and Seafood located at 1010 Capitol Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please.
I'm Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 284 South 87th Avenue. I'm here with Mr. Ron Pollan, who's also the manager. This is very exciting. This is going into the new Marriott full-service restaurant, five-star restaurant, in the southwest corner of the Marriott. So we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class A liquor license for Minar &amp; Maynard, Inc. doing business as Patton Mike's Bar &amp; Grill located at 9136 Bedford Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good morning or afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council. My wife Jennifer and I would like to take over Patton Mike's Bar &amp; Grill on 9136 Bedford Avenue. We've been bartending there for 10 to 15 years apiece and would like to take it to the next generation if that's okay with you guys.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? I'm sorry. Oh, you wanted to get your name and address for the record, I'm sorry.
Thomas Gobby, 16012 Cedar Circle.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moving and seconded to approve item nine, no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Thank you. Item 10, an application to consider a Class A liquor license for Omaha Hotel Partners, LLC doing business as Cambria Hotel and Suites Omaha located at 740 North 14th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and members of the council. I am Levi Stork. I'm here on behalf of the Cambria Hotel, 740 North 14th Street. The primary business activity operated on the premises is the Cambria Hotel.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving and seconded to approve item 10, do no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Thank you. Item 10, an application to consider a Class A liquor license for Craft Axe Throwing, LLC doing business as Craft Axe Throwing located at 2562 Leavenworth Street, Suite 100, A's Communication and Support.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Travis Cornelius. It's nice to see you guys, Mr. President and the rest of the council. We're excited to open our second craft axe throwing location here in Omaha on 2562 Leavenworth here and happy to answer any questions you guys have for us.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure that you understand and agree to the conditions that we've adopted for locations like this, and we had the timber flying acts that agreed to these, and it's my understanding you do, but I want to put it on the record, okay?
Okay.
And that is that there'll be no alcohol in the throwing lanes, and if there are minors in the establishment, they'll be wrist-banded.
Okay. I did have a concern about the wristbands. We'd prefer to put wristbands on people over the age of 21 just because minors could pull them off. Is that what you mean by that?
That's what I meant.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, so, yep, we are aware of that.
You agree to those?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion approved.
Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 12 through 14 were held on August 28, 2018, and we are going to pull item 12 off of the consent agenda. So any motion would be to approve items 13 and 14.
So, second, so third.
It's been second, third, and fourth, so, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to insert Article 14 into Chapter 10 of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning lift assist cost recovery to allow the city to charge a fee to assisted living facilities and nursing care facilities when the Omaha Fire Department provides a lift assist to any person and to establish an initial fee of $400 per lift assist, A's Amendment to the whole requested by the law department.
Let me remind others that this was, the public hearing has been held on this already. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Chief Bossman, if you wouldn't mind coming down just for a little follow-up on this ordinance we've been discussing for several weeks now and that we discussed this morning.
Kathy Bossman, Omaha Fire Department, 1516 Jackson.
Thank you. And thanks also for agreeing to the layover. I know we, it was several weeks, we wanted to make sure that some outreach had been conducted on the proposal here, and I think, if you want to go ahead and summarize, I think you sent out 65 letters and kind of what the feedback has been.
We did. We sent out 65 letters to all of the licensed assisted living and nursing home facilities as listed on the Department of Health and Human Services website. After sending those letters, I received two emails with questions, and really the questions were regarding the billing and who would be billed, basically clarifying the definition of a lift assist. And I believe the mayor's hotline also received three emails, which we also responded to, and one phone call in support of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. And I know there was an article that ran earlier this week that was a little bit confusing for our folks. I know the city council office got a lot of inquiries, and I did too personally, about folks who read the article. To me, this could apply to an elderly parent, they might be taking care of at their home or, you know, individual situations, and I just want to clarify for the record and for those that may be watching, that this would not apply to any of those situations, correct?
Correct. Lift assist would not apply to any of those situations. It would not apply to any private residences or independent living facilities.
Mm-hmm, okay. Just the nursing facilities and skilled nursing facilities.
Just a nursing home, skilled nursing home, or an assisted living, staffed assisted living occupancy.
Okay, yeah, so that's all we're talking about, no individual circumstances or charges on any individuals directly.
And home health care is excluded, hospice care at home is excluded.
Okay. And then we also had a conversation, I want to thank Julia Sebastian, who has been involved in this process from Newcastle in my district, who's the largest facility in the state, and had some suggestions for us even this morning, just on some definitions that I think are now represented in Amendment to the Whole, which is 12A. So just to confirm what those mean, either with you or law and your acceptance of those, I guess, I think one was just making sure the definitions of a facility was consistent with state law.
Correct. The last legislative session did approve a new definition of an assisted living facility, so we included the new definition in the ordinance as an amendment.
And that appears in what would be A there.
Correct.
And then there was a mission, as it applies to emergency medical treatment, too, can you?
We added the words "treatment" to the definition of a lift assist because the lift assist only applies to an individual that does not have a medical condition or did not fall because of a medical condition, and it does not apply to somebody who is injured because of the fall. So we would, as our standard of care report, sorry, respond to the facility, and we always do a physical assessment on every individual. If that physical assessment determines that someone is injured or has a medical condition, that lift assist would not apply to that scenario.
Right. And that was a concern they had, too, to make sure that if it was truly an instance where 911 or emergency assistance was needed, it would not, this would not apply in that circumstance, and I think this does further clarify that.
Correct, yes. As long as we are providing treatment, the lift assist no longer applies.
Okay, thank you. So I would just thank Julia for her contributions to this, and also manual pathways that I heard about from in my district on this item, and then I'll yield a floor in case there's more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. Actually, my questions were answered with Mr. Festerson's questions as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to amend the whole 1212A.
Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 12, with the amendment of the whole, is approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 15 through 33 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And we are going to take item 18 off of the consent, and is there one other?
No, that's it.
Is that the only one? 18 off of consent, so we'd be 15 through 17 and 19 through 33 if we're going to make a motion.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing. Oh, that's right. We do have to ask people questions or see if they'll talk to us, right? Any proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
And this motion is to approve 15 through 17, 19 through 33, correct?
Correct.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item maintain a resolution to approve the professional services agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for services on OPW 53441 in the amount of $2,392,849 for the Water Resources Recovery Facilities Master Plan Project, A's Amendment to change the fund source from Sewer Revenue Fund 21121 to Sewer Revenue Improvements Fund 21124.
Move the, or public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Jarom.
Yes, is it amendment of the whole, madam clerk, or just amendment?
It's just an amendment.
Move the amendment.
Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Do we have to amend it?
Approved as amended, yep.
Okay, so we need an amendment, need to approve it as an amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 34, a resolution to approve the Dahlman Rose Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1903 South 7th Street in amount up to $1,800,000, A's Communication and Support.
Public hearing on agenda item number 34 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. The Dahlman Rose TIF project plan is a project to construct 36 new for-sale market-rate row homes. This is located at 7th and Cedar, kind of in the midst of the Old Market South and the Dahlman neighborhood, associated neighborhood areas. Originally, the project was in blue. It grew to incorporate the yellow parcel as well, which worked well for the neighborhood, worked well for the owner of that single badly lot. I have a picture of what it used to look like. This site had been pretty much neglected, underutilized, some dilapidated, a little hard to see, dilapidated greenhouses on the site for quite some time, had been zoned general commercial. But like I say, 36 new row homes. The applicant is Dahlman Rose LLC, and Ben Cat is the managing member. They worked with the city pretty closely in the neighborhood. The design evolved over time, and they do have the support of the Dahlman Neighborhood Association and the Old Market South Neighborhood Association. Total project cost is 11.9 million. They're asking for 1.8 million in TIF. Project meets the TIF program criteria and is appropriate land use. Ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, Brent Beller, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Dahlman Rose LLC. With me today is Mr. Ben Cat. Don has always does a fine job. Just a couple additions, so there'll be 16 two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath, two-car garage units, 20 three-bed, three-and-a-half-bath, two-car units, all market-rate units. One of the issues that delayed us in all this, as Don pointed out, was that last remaining parcel that was in the northwest corner of the property. Kudos to Mr. Cat and his team by working with that neighbor, acquiring the property. It's not, hasn't been acquired yet. It's under contract. In conjunction with our approvals, we'll close on that property. So excited for the project, want to break ground yet this year and have these units come online next fall, so we appreciate your consideration. Here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Hello, council, Mr. President. My name is Mark Von Drossick. I live at 211 South 37th Street. I also do work with a group called Omaha Tenants United. It's a housing advocacy group for poor and working-class people. There's a lot of TIF financing being discussed over the next few items, and I'm not going to get up and speak against each and every one of them. I don't want to waste your time, but I just want to reiterate, it needs to be said in a public forum, no one making minimum wage in this state, which is $9 an hour, can afford market-rate housing. No one. No one will be able to, no one making minimum wage in this state will be able to afford any of the almost $15 million in TIF funding for projects that we're approving across the city today. I think it's nice that Grace University is being redeveloped into something more appropriate for the neighborhood. That's nice that that land is being used, but nonetheless, no poor or working-class person is going to be able to afford to live in any of these housing units. Market rate sounds nice, but again, no one working $9 an hour can afford any of this, and I don't want to waste any more of your time today on something I've already spoken of many times. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. I just wanted to tell you that I was excited about this investment in District 4, although it's very close between District 3 and 4. And just as you explained and we heard, it truly was an area that was underutilized. It could have probably been many a things, and I'm happy to see this. It's a very hot zip code, a very hot area, and for taking that leap. So, like many developments, early on, there was a lot of questions, maybe a couple concerns about different projects that are different parts of this project that have been taken care of, and I'd much rather deal with this development than what is there now that I do get occasional calls on, so thank you for your investment. I'll be moving to approve if there's no other lights.
There are.
Maybe one, okay.
There's one other light. Mr. Jarom.
Yeah, I think this is a big day for South Omaha, particularly in the botanical garden area south of Little Italy. There's a lot of vacant properties in the area, and those properties have been neglected. There's weeds and bushes and trash and litter and all sorts of things that are creating an environment that is tarnishing what is formerly really a neat area of our city, and this development will go a long way to kickstarting a lot of that activity. Mindful that why we're probably hearing people, it would seem, in somewhat increasing numbers with concern about tax increment financing or with regard to market-rate housing is because there is a feeling, particularly in the midtown, downtown area, that there's a squeeze on people who are in the lower incomes, middle incomes, younger professionals, and the gaping need in our city for affordable housing and more low-income housing. And that need is real, that need is substantial, and we're really not, as a community, dealing with that. One of the developers is sitting in this room, by the way, who has had involvement in projects with low-income housing, is one of the applicants on a later TIF, so it's kind of really unfair to him in terms of his team and what they're doing. But there's a big need for this housing in our city, and affordable housing is now called workforce housing, but when you have developers who've wanted to do that, they look at the price of the dirt and the land that they're trying to acquire for that need, they look at the costs of infill development, and they look at the return and what the money's going to cost to build the project and then finances it, and the numbers just don't work because the return isn't there. Other major metropolitan cities are investing, whether they be CDBG or other sorts of funding, to help spur those developments, and that's something our city probably ought to be planning on, and I don't know whether our planning committee, you know, wants to take this on in terms of the planning department, but it's something we do need to be looking more into because as the BRT comes online, as other forms of mass transit come online, the need for people to live closer to where they work is only going to increase in our city. And people who have lower incomes or lower middle incomes or even middle incomes will be dependent upon finding places to live that are affordable with access to mass transit to get about our city. If we don't address these things, I think what you hear right now is a small number of people bringing this to our attention is only going to grow, and the cost to do the outskirts development where dirt is cheap is only going to create additional issues in terms of people getting them into the city where the jobs are. And I see planners around the room and developers nodding their head. I think it's the elephant in the room. We all know it's there, but our city really needs to be moving forward to how we can partner with the development community and the brokers and everyone to brainstorm how we can address this need.
Thank you. Is there a motion? You made a motion. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jarom.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-five, a resolution to approve the 420 condominium regime tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at 420 South 11th Street in an amount up to six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
Public hearing agenda item number thirty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Again, the four-hundred, 420 condo regime project is located at 420 South 11th Street in the heart of the Old Market. This building is, was damaged during the, particularly water damage during the fire-suppression efforts for the M's Pub Fire. Then there were subsequent mold problems. Basically, it required the entire gutting of the building and emergency stabilization of the exterior masonry walls, and then a complete reconstruction, which is underway, of the interior of the building or the inside, the residential condo units themselves. This building was placed on the National Register in nineteen seventy-nine. It's a historic building in a historic district, not just any historic district, but the Old Market, one that is really important to the, helping establish the city's image and identity. And this is a prominent building in the middle of that historic district. The applicant in this case is the 420 Condo Association, working on behalf of the twelve owners. Kendra Ringenberg, who's here today, is the council for the condo association. The costs readily exceeded the insurance proceeds that were received. The total project costs are approximately eight-point-four million, a little less. The insurance was about six-point-five million. I would note that there was one-point-seven million in demolition and stabilization costs and another one-point-four million in mold and asbestos remediation, and that all came before the construction even needed to begin. Their TIF request is for six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars, six-hundred-and-eighty, pardon me, six-eighty-five, six-eighty-two dollars. Project meets the requirements of the TIF program. It's an appropriate land use, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you. I have a question. And the only reason I'm asking this question just before I came to meeting today, I had an email or a text from somebody asking, now, is there a lawsuit right now with MUD on this building?
I understand that there is a lawsuit underway. You may, I'd probably defer to either our legal counsel or the applicants. My understanding is that there is a lawsuit against MUD.
Okay. And do you have any idea what the value of that lawsuit is? I'm just...
No idea. I don't think, well, you really can't know until it's settled, and that could easily be a couple of years yet.
I think I have... Kendra.
Kendra Ringenberg, one-three-one-eight North 187th Street. I am going to excuse that I am not a litigator and not involved in any litigation, so I can't give too much of an answer, except for to tell you that there are a number of lawsuits out there, and I'm told it's six, seven years down the road before anything's going to be decided because there's so much interchanging. But the reason that this has held so long is that we had to wait until the owners had no ability to sue the city. So, that timeframe has expired, which is how, why this was delayed two years, because we needed to wait until that statute of limitations had run before, obviously, the city would support any incentives with respect to this project.
Okay. Well, I'm just doing this because there's somebody out there watching, and I would just want to make sure they knew I'd asked a question. Thank you.
I may elaborate a little bit. Again, the TIF request is six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, which covered just a fraction of the building's stabilization to begin with. So, it's worth kind of noting what the money is used for, and also, it's my understanding in talking with the applicants, that the combination of the TIF funds and the insurance proceeds still leaves the owners upside down in terms of their finances on this project.
I appreciate the further explanation. Hopefully, that will clear up with those people who have a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a tremendously important corner to our city and one of our largest tourist attractions, and was there over the weekend. Looking forward to seeing this restored back to what we know it can be. And so, Don, I appreciate you going over those numbers, too. I also had a question about the unusual nature of it, given the insurance proceeds expected and what occurred here, but it seems clear from your numbers that this clearly meets the but-for test, which was this could not happen but for using tax increment financing to help restore, given the facts and figure issued is provided. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton.
Well, and this is just a follow-up, and I'm not sure who could answer this question, but my thought would be if there are lawsuits that are six, seven years off, TIF is obviously fifteen years, if there was an ax, and Kendra, I don't know if you could answer this, and I don't want to maybe hold you to this answer, but my thought would be that maybe that you would agree, even like a subrogation of those funds, could they would, if you had funds over and above what was spent, what the owners are out, that then any proceeds from those lawsuits would then pay off the TIF early, would, I guess, be my hope if that was the case. Could you speak to that, maybe?
Sure. Again, Kendra Ringenberg, one-three-one-eight North 187th. You know, I have not discussed that with the owners, and frankly, each of the owners had to do their own lawsuits, so I'm not sure if they're all in the same boat. I think some of them didn't pursue it at all. I'm not sure. They did not do it as an association, is my understanding. So, it was kind of individual. If that's something that city wants us to look at, we can certainly talk to them and see, because I understand your point.
Right.
It's so far down the road, who knows what they're going to get.
Six, seven years, right.
And there's so many people fighting over the funds that I just, you know, I don't know what the likelihood of them getting much of anything is, but that's certainly something that, you know, we can discuss with Jennifer and Paul and write in.
And so, the 420 condo association isn't involved? These are all individual suits?
That's my understanding, yes, that the association did not do it on behalf of the owners. They each individually decided whether or not to pursue it. And I just, I don't know the status.
No, I, no, I, and I wasn't aware of the particulars or the details, but...
Yeah, that's my understanding, is that the association didn't take it on. I mean, the association just, for the record, also has two commercial units who are not part of this TIF as well. So, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of different interests going on in the project. So, but if the subrogation does, you know, that is something that's never come up before, but I, you know, I don't know if they would have an issue with that because frankly, they just want to be made whole, and they are not whole as it is.
Right.
As Don pointed out, they're all having to put insignificant other equity on top of this to get their projects done.
No, that makes sense, and thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
I think it's still a, I think it's still a good project. It's in a great area, and I think what a lot of people don't, and I got another email that said, please don't use our tax dollars to pay for this because they didn't have enough insurance. And I think it's the one thing that we, every year or so, we have to reiterate that TIF isn't necessarily using taxpayer dollars. Right now, they're just going to continue, we're going to continue to receive the same taxes that we have been receiving, the city and the schools and everybody else, that all the entities on the sheet that you get for your property taxes. However, the increase won't happen until fifteen, but the owners are still going to pay the full amount of the property taxes. It's just that the money that they're paying is going to go to pay off for here six-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars in a loan for the mold rehab stabilization. And that's the one thing that I want to be clear. People still think that we're using, actually using, taking like money out of our general fund to pay for these projects, and I just wanted to clarify that there would never be an increase in property value, I think, unless you were able, unless you got some assistance to do this. Is that right?
That's correct, and the other thing to point out is when we set the TIF, we did it based on the assessed values as they were before the fire. More than likely, they'll be higher than that, so the city is going to immediately be getting more tax dollars, you know, more increment than, than right now.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because I think, we were very conservative in our numbers, but realistically, when these are built out, they should be assessed at higher than they were previously.
So, you didn't ask to have your value go down after the fire?
Well, no, they went down, they went down after the fire, but then what we're saying they're going to go back to is where they were right before the fire, which, as you know, property taxes have increased. So, more than likely, the tax value will actually go above that, which the city and county would get.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The other thing on the insurance is, you know, because I, people, I think, think, oh, they were underinsured. They weren't underinsured. This was the most unique circumstance possible, you know, the coldest day of the year, frozen, they couldn't get in there, so they, then it got heated and then mold. I mean, it's, it's the most unusual circumstances you could imagine. They had it insured for what it should have been. It's just the circumstances kept, there was a gap that nobody could have foreseen.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo.
President Gray, and I think mine was along the same lines. I just wanted to hear from, I guess, legal to see if maybe they knew of anything pending from either the association individuals, maybe the contractors doing the work before the fire, or possibly even some going on now. Was there any lawsuits pending towards this?
Paul Cratch, City Attorney. There are no lawsuits against the city on the 420 building. There are some lawsuits on the M's Pub Building against the city. We made it clear early on that if anybody in the 420 was going to file a suit against the city, that tax increment financing would not be available, and they had to make that decision. They chose to go with TIF as opposed to a lawsuit against the city.
Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to hear.
Thank you. There are no more lights. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded to approve item thirty-five. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Pass.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerome.
Pass.
Councilmember Jerome passed due to a potential conflict of interest. Item thirty-five is approved, six to zero. Item thirty-six, a resolution to approve the Grace University Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at one-three-one-one South Ninth Street in an amount up to two-million-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, ninety-five dollars.
Public hearing agenda item number thirty-six is today. Proponents, please.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. We're going to return now to where we were earlier, the Dahlman neighborhood and the Old Market South neighborhood, just a few blocks further north from what we looked at with the Dahlman Rose. This is the Grace University campus. The university, as you are aware, has closed up shop. It's a large, two-point-seven-acre campus located in the middle of these single-family neighborhoods. There are three dorm buildings and a large administration building. These are going to be gutted. Asbestos and lead will be remediated, and the four buildings will be converted into a hundred-and-sixty-seven one-bedroom slash efficiency apartments, and there'll be a hundred-and-sixty-seven parking spaces, including a lot that's currently on-site, and then spaces developed as angled parking stalls within the right-of-way, which will be leased from the city. The owner, developer, is Triangular Holdings. They're an urban village entity owned by Jerry Reimer and Scott Semrad. They've had really very extensive public engagement with the neighborhood associations and the neighbors of this, this area, and the project has the support of both the Dahlman Neighborhood Association and the Old Market South Neighborhood Association. There are, or may be, a couple of individual residents close to the property. They're still not completely at ease, but the neighborhood associations recognize that, you know, having this property sit unused or abandoned would not be good, and that we've got some experienced developers with a good track record that are going to come in and do something good on this site. Total project investment is a little more than fourteen-point-five million dollars in this neighborhood. The TIF request is for two-million-seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, ninety-five dollars TIF support. It's really a large and ambitious undertaking, and I'd say that the project meets the criteria for a TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the goals of the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any? Proponent?
Scott Semrad, seventeen-fifty South Eighty-Fifth Avenue. I'm the developer, and Don did a good job of giving an overview, so I just wanted to come up here and make myself hear for questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, I just want to thank you, Scott, and your partner Jerry, for your vision on this. When you first met with me and were telling me about your idea, I said the same thing that I've said to Todd Heastead occasionally, and that's, are you out of your mind? How are you going to make this work? Such a challenging site. I forget the details of the asbestos abatement alone, whether it was a three-month or six-month abatement process, but something really big and expensive, and how you were going to take particularly the north end of this, the northeast side, which is a lot older and tougher and more challenging, and actually figure out a way to make it work, and you've done that, and I applaud you for that. Today, I think you can see, if you add it up really quickly, it's around twenty-six million in reinvestment in Dahlman between District Three and District Four, and it's a really hot area of the city with a lot of potential, a lot of interest, and your efforts to include the neighborhood along the process, I think, ameliorated a lot of the initial thoughts and concerns and worries about the university closing, what could come of this property near and long-term, and you've turned this into a positive, so hats off to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we, before I ask for the vote, I just wanted to make a couple of comments real quick, especially to Mr. Von Drosick. I wanted, I wanted you to know that this council in general is very aware of the need for affordable housing and low-income housing. The Omaha Municipal Land Bank, of which we, we do have, we meet every second Wednesday of the month at nine o'clock up in the Jesse Low Conference Room. I would, I would encourage you to attend that meeting because the Land Bank is working on, we have established now a number of properties that we have gotten in a cluster in a, in hopes of developing other than nonprofit developers to, to build on some of those sites. So, we're working that process. We're aware, well, well aware of it. The Land Bank is, is, is doing significant work and very good work, I think, in terms of addressing that by assembling properties, because it's going to be, there's going to be a certain threshold where we might be able to entice private developers to do some work in some of the, some of our more tougher areas. And I think we're, we're starting to get that accomplished, and we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel on that, but I didn't want you to leave here today thinking that this council is not aware of it and is not working on it. There are efforts underway, but again, as Councilmember Jerome pointed out, because of cost factors in a number of instances, including the one that was just mentioned here, market rate is pretty much the way you have to go on some of those in order to recoup the costs that you put into it, but I do want, I did want you to know that there are efforts underway, significant efforts underway, not just with the Land Bank, but others who are associated with the Land Bank to work on affordable housing and even more low-income housing. And with that, there are no more lights. Is there a motion on item thirty-six? Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item thirty-seven, a resolution to approve the Blackstone Hotel Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at three-zero-two South Thirty-Sixth Street in an amount up to seven-million-six-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars is an amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department.
Public hearing agenda item number thirty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley with the City Planning Department. Before you is the TIF redevelopment project plan for the Blackstone Hotel. The Blackstone Hotel building is on the National Register of Historic Places, and it is also designated as a local landmark. You may recall that this particular building was occupied by Keywit Construction, and it was vacated last year due to water damage. There was a water main break last year, so it was vacated, and the applicant, the development team that is here today, has taken it upon themselves to look at how can they restore some glory to this particular building. So, it involves, and I will take a little bit of time to talk about some of the changes because this was introduced on August fourteenth, and then since then, there have been some changes, which is why there's an amendment of the whole. So, on August fourteenth, it was presented, introduced as a reconversion of the Blackstone Office Building back into a hotel and actually an upper upscale boutique hotel with a new addition of forty rooms and surface and on-street parking, and none of that has changed. This is the first TIF project, redevelopment project plan, to use three different funding sources that the City of Omaha has purview and approval of, and that is PACE, TIF, as well as the general business occupation tax. The planning board did give approval of this particular project plan, recommend approval July eleventh. As you may know, in the sources and uses of this particular project, it mentioned TIF, it mentioned PACE, and it mentioned the general business occupation tax. However, in our redevelopment project documents, planned documents, we did not state that the applicant and the development team is also proposing the use of the occupation tax as well as they are proposing an EEA or Enhanced Employment Area Designation. After, after consulting with the Law Department, we were, it was recommended that we make sure we put a statement in the redevelopment plan to comply with the law because the law did, some changes to the community development law did go into effect later in July, so we wanted to make sure we were in compliance, make sure at least there was a statement indicating that the development team is proposing that designation as well as the use of the occupation tax. However, the TIF redevelopment project plan still is, and before you, is still the TIF redevelopment project plan, and that's what the approval will, I will ask for approval of. So, we did go ahead and make those changes. We were able to re-present before the planning board last week at the September fifth planning board, and they, the planning board did give approval again for the project. As with many sizable redevelopment projects, especially rehabs to historical structures, there are always hurdles to overcome, and the magnitude of this particular historical rehabilitation and the new construction project, also the new construction project, there were some total project cost escalations, as well as some changes to the capital stack and, or the funding sources. And as a result, between July and probably within the last week, we've been working with the development team to get these changes made to the redevelopment project plan before it came before you today, so that is the reason for the amendment of the whole. The basic changes are a small change from two-hundred-and-four rooms total to a hundred, to two-hundred-and-five rooms, so about a hundred-and-sixty, I guess, a hundred-and-sixty-one?
Sixty-three.
Sorry, a hundred-and-sixty-three, and so that number must have changed in the new. So, a few more in the, the existing building, and, sorry, I did not show you. So, this is just a, a large bird's-eye view of the site, which is highlighted in purple. A closer view in the blue, so this is where the hotel sits currently, the Blackstone Hotel. This is the parking, service parking. And then the site plan. So, this is just a, a large, uh, bird's eye view of the site, which is highlighted in purple, a closer view in the blue. So, this is where the hotel sits currently, the Blackstone Hotel. This is the parking, service parking. And then the site plan.
Bridget, why don't you pull that mic over just a little bit, so that you, there you go.
Sorry. So, the site plan shows, again, the existing Blackstone Hotel right here, and just for, uh, to understand where we're at, so this is Farnham Street, Thirty-Sixth, Harney, and then this is Thirty-SEventh Street. The new addition is proposed to be right here, so this is the three-to-five-story new hotel of about forty-some units, uh, rooms, sorry. Um, this is a corridor that will connect the two. A pool, a brand-new pool is proposed, um, at this new site, so this, if you remember, this is where the, uh, parking was, right here. Some green space is also proposed. There will be a pool club, one-and-a-half-story pool club at the site, as well as a new restaurant, um, that is proposed. So, this site has now gone from just the Blackstone Office Building to now a hotel with an addition. Here are just a couple of renderings. Well, this is what it looks like right now, and that is the east elevation of the hotel. And this is the north elevation of the new construction. So, right here is the existing, uh, Blackstone Hotel building, and this is the north elevation of the new construction, and you can maybe see it says, "This is the pool club here, this is where the pool would be, and this is where the restaurant would be." And then this is the south elevation. So, again, two hundred and four to two hundred and five total hotel rooms. The TIF amount increased by a hundred and sixty-one thousand, and the TIF committee did approve the increase, uh, from seven hundred, excuse me, seven million, six hundred and forty-six thousand to the seven million, eight hundred and seven thousand. Um, the, there are TIF-eligible expenses, plenty of TIF-eligible expenses for this project, more, enough that the EEA or the occupation tax can be used to cover the eligible project costs that the TIF does not cover, and then PACE also, like I said, is also used on this project. There are separate project costs that are eligible for PACE that the occupation tax and TIF does not cover, so we tried to be very careful that there wasn't, um, any overlap in the various costs. The occupation tax, uh, did increase, and I think someone had pointed out, in the TIF application, it said, the sources and uses said nine million. Later, when the EEA, uh, application came into the EEA committee, the funding source had, uh, increased to about twenty-two million, and then later, a, a little closer to like twenty-two million, six hundred, twenty-seven thousand. The EEA committee has given approval for the, uh, use of that, uh, tax, as well as that designation and that increase. Um, and then the estimated total project cost increased by three, a little over three million, from seventy-seven million, an investment of seventy-seven million, five-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, to seventy-four million, five-hundred-and-eleven-thousand. There is a thirty-one thousand TIF contribution that we did ask of the developers. Um, they are making a significant, uh, investment in...
Excuse me. Well... It went from seventy-four to seventy-seven.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. So, it went from seventy-four, I apologize, seventy-four, I'm looking at my numbers wrong, seventy-four million, five-eleven, to seventy-seven million, five-twenty-nine. Thank you. So, it's a three-million-dollar, a little over three-million-dollar increase. Thirty-one thousand dollar TIF contribution to be used along the Farnham Street corridor for future improvements that may be proposed in that area. Um, and, uh, this, right now, they're estimating that the final value of the project would be about forty-six million, but they may be low on that, and should it come in higher, that just means that the TIF project would pay off sooner. The amount of the TIF compared to the total project cost is about eleven percent, so it's a small portion. And I think I've said enough, so I will ask your appro, for your approval, but I will step aside and let the developers speak.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Tom McClay, thirty-eight, fourteen Farnham Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Uh, really just here to answer any questions for you all. I think Bridget did a, a great job. Sorry for distracting her in the process, uh, of explaining the project. Uh, the, uh, changes she mentioned from the TIF, uh, application to, to really, uh, today are, um, reflected in the, the, the movement we've had as the projects evolved, uh, and I think Bridget highlighted, uh, the, the, the cost increase, which has been material. Uh, as we've dug more and more into this project with our architects, with our design team, um, costs are going up. Interest rates, costs are continuing to increase. Um, a couple of the financing sources, uh, New Market Tax Credits is one example, is not going to be a realistic, uh, source at this point in time for, for this project. The, uh, historic tax credit funding, uh, with the twenty-seventeen tax laws taking effect and changes, uh, reduces the, the value of those, uh, and, and partially the increase in cost was the historic renovation, so there's a, there's a little bit of a question mark sometimes on, on those to, to continue to use them. Uh, and then overall financing costs are just getting elevated. As I mentioned, the interest rates, uh, that, uh, have increased, but additionally, how much actually you can borrow to, to, to execute a hotel like this, uh, is, uh, has been, uh, pulled down and, and being limited. So, it, it's, as we've refined the project, as you all know, TIF is really a long, longest process oftentimes in these developments, uh, going back to applying before the TIF committee, the month they meet, and the planning board, and then you all. Uh, so we, it, it has continued to evolve, but we think we're now in a very good place, uh, with our construction design, uh, our construction team, uh, architects, which is Leo Daley here, uh, which has been a great, uh, asset for this project, uh, and we're real, uh, confident we can, uh, take it home from here. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard?
Again, Mark Vondrosik, two-eleven, South Thirty-SEventh Street. I apologize for lying earlier about not speaking again. Um, I just want to respond to a couple of things the councilman said. Uh, I want to make clear that the reason I came here today was not to disparage individual companies or people who are involved in the development process as bad people, um, or having bad motivations. I don't think any of you have bad motivations or corrupt motivations for that matter. Um, what I want to, the reason I come here to these meetings and I talk about this is because the city council spends, uh, every Tuesday, and I would imagine a lot of your time speaking to people like this, these development corporations, these business owners, these peas, affluent folks who own these buildings, who have the resources and the capital involved to make these decisions and to make these things happen for them. Uh, and we're, while it's nice that we do have things like the, like the Community Land Bank, and we are working on improving those things, it's very clear that the housing plan for the City of Omaha is development-led, is developer-led, is corporate-led. There's no overarching housing policy in this city, uh, dedicated to solving the problem of homelessness or solving the problem of providing low-income housing for people in this city. Uh, the entire, if there is a plan, it's being created and developed by these development corporations. Uh, and so I come as a poor and a working-class person to suggest to you, to beg you really, uh, that we try to move in a different direction, so that when I come here and I say, "Poor and working-class people's needs aren't being met," I don't, uh, I'm not giving statements which I would say, uh, have a fundamental misunderstanding of the problem of gentrification. Uh, comment, Chris, Mr. Jerem comments, uh, such as, "This lot was left empty, uh, there's trash here," without recognizing the symptoms and the causes of that under our capitalist system, by the people who weren't able to maintain their lots and their houses, uh, to the point where they had to sell to, uh, slum lords who took their houses and continued to let them dilapidate, hoping to turn them over for development companies to make these large, larger projects. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify my statements earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, Mr. Jerem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, you know, we throw around terms because they're popular, but gentrification, as I understand it, is the displacement of people who were really indigenous to, in many ways, over generations, a particular neighborhood. And when you look at empty lots, I don't see people living there that are being displaced. And, you know, this is, this is a debate that, that I would call is, in some areas, displacement. But when you get into empty lots, if you get into empty buildings, you get into historic buildings, you get into iconic buildings like the Blackstone, then those comments are misplaced. And this particular project at the Blackstone Hotel is, in stature to me, Omaha's version of the Fairmont Hotel, or the Union Plaza Hotel, or in a smaller scale, the Palmer House, and many other iconic hotels around the country. And when you have a team that's willing to invest nearly eighty million dollars to, i-if it all comes together, uh, projects like this are oftentimes like putting together the most complicated, uh, score in a symphony, because you heard Bridget mention the capital stack, uh, how short a term, how complex an issue on whether a project goes, and the various sources of funding and learning, whether they be New Market Tax Credits and the market not being really, um, uh, committed right now to hotels for new, New Market Tax Credits, or whether you're talking about, um, other forms of stacks, whether they're the Enhanced Employment Tax or not, they're very complicated things that, that, in the end of the day, depend on whether a project like this goes. So, to me, commercial building, hotel building, iconic building, um, maybe I misunderstood what was just said, but I don't see how there's gentrification on that whatsoever, and this was an office building, and it's a very challenging project, and it's a very exciting project, and the people, like, um, Mr. McClay and, uh, the two individuals who are sitting behind him, who have transformed with Mr. McClay and others, and, and investors, the, the Farnham Street corridor, which had been turned into parking lots, uh, in a way that was sensitive to, uh, low-income people, because there was CDBG money invested to keep low-income people in Blackstone, and very few people realize that, but perhaps maybe the planning director. And so, um, you know, we can have that debate, I, I welcome that debate, but I know the people of South Omaha who have felt slighted in redevelopment projects are getting the Dolman Rose today, at, at almost twelve million. They're getting at, at investment of almost fifteen million at Grace University, and those buildings practically cannot be redeveloped if you don't have people with private investment money and TIF money and other tranches that they can ha-access. And that doesn't demean or, or understate the real and present need for affordable and low-income housing, uh, low-income housing or affordable housing in our city, but, um, it isn't gentrification. This isn't gentrification whatsoever. I mean, that's, that's a misplaced use of that term, because it's trendy, and, and it's, it's popular to just throw those things out to, to take a shot, and, and I don't accept it. I'll have that debate, and I welcome that debate any day of the week. Um, you can, you can call displacement displacement where there is displacement. Harlem is gentrification. When you take a group of African-Americans living in poverty and through redevelopment, they, they're leaving Harlem in droves, that is gentrification. Empty lots in South Central Omaha is not gentrification. Redeveloping the Blackstone Hotel is not gentrification. Taking part of this Grace University project, which I believe is the old Saint Philomena's Hospital, is not gentrification. So, I mean, let's, let's keep our, our references to where they should be, and, um, you know, I look at this developer, and, and I think, I, I don't know if it's two hundred or three hundred low-income, uh, units, more than that, I'm being told, that he's done in the last two years. So, uh, to me, I don't, I don't understand where that comes from personally. This is a great project, and it's going to be, it's not out of the woods, so there's a long way to go, and you've heard about the Enhanced Employment Tax that'll be needed, and at the level that it'll be needed, and that has to be sold to the investment world, who then chooses or not to invest in that tranche, or it doesn't work. And it's, that's why these things change, and that's why the numbers change, and that's why they go up. But, um, this is a wonderful project, and the people who are doing it are wonderful people, and I'm appreciative and supportive of it, so I move to approve.
Moving second to approve item thirty-seven, and no further lights, roll call.
And just a clarification, it's, it'd be for the amendment of the whole.
For the amendment of the whole, right. Okay. Roll call.
Oh, did Vinnie?
Oh, I'm sorry. Vinnie, you had a light on? Oh, I'm sorry.
For number thirty-seven. I just wanted to quickly add, uh, this is a huge commitment, number thirty-seven, and we're talking about the Blackstone Hotel. I mean, iconic, historic, prestigious, it's everything that you would want in this area, and we're talking about, uh, improving the urban core, we're adding jobs, it's the economic growth, it's, it's one more factor in working on improving transportation in this town. So, thank you for what you're doing, especially with this Blackstone Hotel.
Thank you. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve item thirty-seven, there are no further lights, roll call.
Thirty-seven amendment of the whole.
Thirty-seven amendment of the whole.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item thirty-eight, a resolution to approve the Drummond Motor Company and Firestone Tire Buildings Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at two-five-seven-zero and two-five-six-six Farnham Street, in an amount up to one million, eighty thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Public hearing on agenda, item number thirty-eight is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, again, City Planning. Um, I do want to take a moment to say I appreciate and thank this council for understanding the need for redevelopment in the city, from the infill development projects to, uh, historic rehab projects that have been presented before you, and the jobs, the projects that bring jobs and reinvestment in the area, so I just want to thank you for understanding. So, this one is the Drummond Motor Company and Firestone Building TIF Redevelopment Project Plan, and it is located here on Farnham Street and Twenty-Sixth, the corner of Twenty-Sixth Avenue, and there are actually two buildings here. Um, this thinner building is the Firestone Building. This here happens to represent the Drummond Building, and then, as I mentioned, the smaller, narrower building represents the Firestone Building. I might... See if I can just keep them up here. Both of these buildings are listed on the National Register of Historic Places. They are, um, also have been a part of the auto row, the former auto row, um, of twenty, of Farnham Street. Um, the Drummond Motor Company Building, uh, was built in nineteen twelve, and it has served the auto industry up until nineteen fifty-eight, and then the Barnhart Press, uh, Company moved in and occupied the building, um, at least through the late seventies, and it has been either vacant or served as a warehouse. The development team that is behind me has proposed to take and convert this building into twenty-market-rate apartments, um, on the top floors, and approximately two thousand five hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of commercial space along the Farnham Street side, so right along here. They also are proposing another eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet of underground basement commercial space, um, as well as some indoor, uh, parking. There is going to be additional parking available to, uh, residents and patrons of this building, as well as the Firestone Building, along Farnham Street. The far, the Firestone Building, which is this building here, um, it was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds, and it was actually built for the Firestone Company, um, which supplied tires and other rubber products. It, um, was occupied by, also by the Barnhart, uh, Press, um, that occupied that building up until about last year, a couple of years ago. So, again, this development team saw this as an opportunity to not only take this building, but they were actually able to, uh, secure the Firestone Building and make this a larger project. Firestone Building will be a mixed use of just commercial, no residential or market-rate apartments in that building, so it will be a twenty thousand square feet of leasable commercial, uh, retail... So it will be a 20,000 square feet of leasable commercial, retail, and office space. There are going to be, and I apologize, I didn't have my numbers right, but a number of jobs that will be added to the area as a result of this particular project. See if I can find it real quick. Not quick enough. There is, the developers are proposing, and the project does qualify for a little over a million in TIP. This is an investment of 7.6 million in this particular project. We did ask for a, another TIP contribution from the developers of 20,000, and that is going to be dedicated to potential future improvements along the Farnham Street corridor. The amount of TIP that is requested represents about 14.2 percent of the total project cost. And with that, I will ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Thanks, President. Tom McClay, 3814 Farnham Street, here in Omaha. Really here just to answer any questions on this project. I would, I would state, I did, was able to catch Mr. Vandrasik, and I invited him to have a more lengthy conversation about affordable housing, which I've done quite a bit of work on. Thanks much.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
I would just like to say, I have mentioned to these developers and several other developers about the need for affordable housing. As I have brought a lot of TIP projects to you, a lot of them are market rate, and we need the market rate to bring in those incomes into the core of our community to spur on more economic vitality. But they have heard from me quite a bit about, "We need affordable housing, we need affordable housing." And it is a, as you mentioned, Council, Councilman Jaram, it is a, an art to try to make that happen. But with the affirmatively furthering fair housing, and hopefully I'm not speaking out of turn to my, my director, affirmatively furthering fair housing initiative that is upon the city, it is something the planning department is looking at, and, and as I said, I'm pressing our developers to see, can they add more of those types of units into their projects, or even contemplate them more, a little more.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, for 518 North Fort Pierce Street. We were talking about how complex some of these issues are. I want to comment on the TIP. It's comment, it's complex too, I think, and as I come to the city's, like city council meetings, trying to see if I can understand this. But one question I have is, how are these areas considered blighted? Like where you need this money to come in, how to apply, because there's a lot of money to, this, 1 million is 14 percent, so there's more money being put into this areas, in this area, so which is nice. But how much of projects, how many people are we actually housing? I mean, the, what is the end goal? Is there only one model? Is it the developer model? So, I think sometimes, well, no, my question is that if, how is this area considered blighted? That'd be my question.
This area. Thank you. If you wish to, Ms. Hadley, you certainly can.
Bridgette Hadley, City Planning. I would just say that there are several areas in our, in the Omaha area, and this is part of that core area, that has been considered blighted and substandard, and it's based on the community development law. And it has two different parts of it. There's a substandard qualification that really looks at the physical conditions of the area, and then there is the demographic piece, which also includes some physical conditions of the land and buildings. So, this area, as we have been, I know, you've seen a lot of redevelopment in the area, but the area has met those qualifications over the years because of the physical conditions of the areas, meaning dilapidation, deterioration of streets and roadways and buildings, as well as maybe there's, there's population loss, there's low unemployment, or low employment, excuse me, or high unemployment. There's a low per capita income, so those are some of the qualifications that a lot of these CRA areas, community redevelopment areas meet, and this particular area has been meeting that. Even though we have been redeveloping and investing, it's to get that area up to, up to par.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 38 is approved, seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve the Coming Plaza Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 3040 Coming Street, in an amount up to $133,554.
Public hearing agenda item number 39 is today, proponents please.
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. The Coming Plaza Project is a locate, well, it's located at 3040 Coming Street, near 30th Street. It's a smaller project, as TIP projects go. It's also on a portion of Coming Street that has not seen a lot of economic reinvestment. It's an area we'd like to see some more economic reinvestment. It's essentially the front door for north downtown. This proposal, and you might recognize the site better from, it's a bleak aerial, it's this pair of buildings here. The site is comprised of these two buildings here. The proposal is to rehab part of the property, 7,100 square feet of the existing building, into three commercial tenant bays. And then, this metal-skinned warehouse building, currently empty, that will be demolished and replaced with a surface parking lot. That's about 8,600 square feet. The owners are Ed Alstott and his wife. Total project cost is $889,500. They are requesting $133,554 in TIP support. It's a project that meets our TIP criteria and seems to be in appropriate use in that area, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 39 is approved, seven to zero. Item 40, a resolution to approve the mediated settlement memorandum for the pending lawsuit, USS Hazard Inc. versus the City of Omaha, in the amount of $2,500,000.
Public hearing agenda item number 40 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Moved to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 40 is approved, seven to zero. Item 41, an ordinance to accept the bid from Galls LLC for two years to provide uniform items for the Omaha Police Department.
Public hearing agenda item number 41 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
The public hearings for items 42 and 43 will be held together. Item 42, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-87, amending the definition of reckless owner. Item 43, an ordinance to amend Omaha Municipal Code, Chapter 6, Article 1, Section 6-1493A, amending the definition of potentially dangerous animal by deleting provisions in Section 6-14913 regarding medical treatment in public grounds, and clarifying that the condition is satisfied whether the incident occurs on public or private property.
Public hearing agenda items numbers 42 and 43 are today, proponents please.
Kelly Brown, with the Nebraska Humane Society, 8929 Fort Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item.
Non-action items, items 44 through 65, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Motion adjourned. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jaram.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:19.
Not too bad.